Okay, we'll have a moment of solid meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to the Montague County Commission to order. As the record reflected, all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent approval with our county administrator, Renata McCord. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning. We have nine exonerations for $3,175.46 minutes for April 28th, 2021, and May 5th, 2021. Vouchers, General County Fund, $397,432.73, 911, 359. Chestnut Ridge Park, $5,055.47, Camp Muffley, $11,885.44. Mason Dixon Park, $1,091.91, Recreation Living, $982.64. Assessor's valuation, $2,027.45. Payroll, $1,006.48, $533.39. Federal forfeiture, $15,000. Star City TIF, $106.549.33. Morgantown Industrial TIF, $157.508.49. One General TIF, $287.223.79. University Town Center TIF, $990,000, $83.47. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, $15,916.77. Chestnut Ridge Parks, $363. Camp Muffley, $8,008.79. Mason Dixon Park, $165.32. Assessor's valuation, $10,548.75. For voucher total of $3,659,892.64. Position vacancies for board and authorities are listed on our website. Judiciary orders from May 12th, 2021.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We also have a first quarter file status report for Judiciary Commissioner Matthew Gatta.
Move to approve, second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is introduction of new employees, personnel changes. Mark, Mark Ralston, you here for the sheriff?
Morning.
Morning.
I'd like to introduce on the sheriff's behalf two prospective employees. The first is Eric White, who will be a part-time transport officer with an effective start date of May 16. The second is Melissa Benninger, who will be a full-time court security officer, also with an effective date of May 16. And this, these two hires brings us nearly full in our civilian position, so we're happy to have them. It's been a while since we've had full staffing in those positions.
Move for approval, second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the county.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mark, and Happy Police Week and...
Thank you very much.
Ms. DeCium, Superintendent, Camp Muffley?
She has a new hire, Tommy Rushing, from Grafton. He is doing seasonal maintenance at $11 an hour. His start date is today.
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any other?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, next item on the agenda is comments from the public. We will now open the meeting for comments from the public. Any member of the public wishing to be heard must raise his hand, come forward and provide his or her name and address for the record. Do we have anybody who would like to speak in public? Mr. Rogerson. Morning, Russ.
That's fine, yes.
You're allowed to have that off the...
I tend to mumble with my mask on. Well, good morning. Russ Rogerson, President and CEO of Morgantown Area Partnership. We have, our office is over at 265 Spruce Street, right across the street. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning to give you a brief update on some of the activities and plans we have moving forward as it relates to providing assistance related to the Beatrice plant closing. As you know, immediately upon that announcement, we gathered as a task force and then also public officials and had discussions and set forth this task force of community leaders across the spectrum of education, government, and private sector. And since that time, we've been in contact with the company itself, as well as local officials, state representatives, members of the Department of Development, and the governor's office, as well as the federal representatives. In an effort to try to coordinate and plan an approach to, one, assist employees as they are furloughed from that company come end of July, and also to see if we can find a suitable tenant for that facility to keep that viable job-producing entity in our community. There's been a lot of work going on, obviously not publicly, and we're now getting down to the last couple, two and a half months before the plant closure. And you'll notice that here in the next two weeks, we'll be launching a workforce development committee out of partnership with the express goal to deal with workforce development issues across the county, but specifically, first out of the gate, we'll tackle providing assistance for Beatrice employees who are being severed in this situation. Couple of things that will be most notable, besides coordinating with all of our educational institutions, training folks, the workforce, West Virginia, and the company, is we're going to have a job fair sometime, most likely in June. And more details will come with that, once we get the development committee, workforce development committee together. We're also very close to be able to launch a website that will be a job portal for local job postings. One of the things we found in our discussions is that there's not a good single source for local people to search for local jobs. And so we believe we found a solution to that. And once the workforce development committee has been able to review it and sign off on it, we will be launching that. And that will help not only Beatrice employees, it will help all residents of the county and beyond, people who want to return to the county as well. So we're looking very forward to that effort. There'll be additional things related to that, but once the workforce development committee has convened and gets started and we're marching forward, we'll keep you appraised of those actions and activities as they come about. On the facility side, we've entertained a number of people interested in learning more about the facility with the possible idea of purchasing it or utilizing it. So we continue to work with the company, we continue to work with development department, state, and, you know, none of those are at the point where I could say that we have eminent decision-making, but just wanted you to know that there is activity and interest in that facility, and we continue to work diligently to be prepared, to do our best to keep another company and/or companies in the building that will provide jobs for all residents of Mon County and beyond. And that's my update.
May I move to suspend the rules?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming. The reason why it's so important that you're here today, that a lot of people have gotten misinformation, and sometimes when we're trying to resolve issues, you do it quietly. And I thought it was important at least to express what was really going on. And I think people need to understand, we're local, and we're talking about a billion-dollar business. So we can only do the things that we can help locally. And I appreciate, everything here is fantastic. I know we're trying to help those individuals, and I want to thank you, but I felt the public needed at least hear this, so they know what we're doing.
Agreed.
Well, thank you, Russ, I really appreciate you being the one, the point on this, so that we can try to get the information clear and consistent. So thank you very much, for you and your organization.
Yes.
Thank you and appreciate your support, and hopefully there will be more solid information coming out in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, do we have anybody else that'd like to speak in public portion? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public portion. Next, we have a public meeting. Open a public meeting. To conduct public meeting on the proposed enactment by the county commission of an ordinance authorizing and approving the current refunding of the Montague County Building Commission Lease Revenue Bonds Series 214A, known as the Montague County Justice Center, the Series 2014A bonds, authorizing the leasing by the county commission of the Montague County Justice Center from the Montague County Building Commission, approving the sale, issuance, and delivery by Montague County Building Commission of its lease revenue refunding bonds, Series 2021, Montague County Justice Center, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 16 million. This would be the Series 2021 bond. Two, one, finance the current refunding of the Series 2014A bonds, and two, pay the certain cost of issuance on the Series 2021 bonds and related cost. So first, I'll call on the staff. Do we have any correspondence or anything regarding this from the public? Okay, we haven't received anything.
No.
Next, I'd like, we have Jason Turner, who is our attorney, to come back, to come up and present the...
Do you do that now? Yes. I'll also be up for the actual consideration on second, second reading of the ordinance. I can read that by title for you, as required by the procedure. But as, as the commission likely knows at this point, the building commission issued its 2014A bonds in 2014 to assist with the construction of the justice center down the street. These bonds are intended to really just keep everything in place that's already in place, but to refund those bonds at a lower debt service, for a lower debt service for the building commission and through the building, the building commission, the county, which pays lease payments in an amount sufficient to make that debt service to the building commission. So this is a, a good money-saving measure, trying to take advantage of the lower interest rate environment that we're in right now, and really doesn't change anything that is currently in place with the current status of the justice center. It's just a way to save money on, on debt service in the future.
Okay, thank you very much, Jason. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in support of this matter being presented? Okay, is there anybody here that's opposed to this, that would like to speak in that regard? Okay, obviously there's no one speaking for or against it, so there's no rebuttal. I guess the next step is to go ahead and read the actual...
Should we do that in the new business?
We'll do that in the new business.
Okay.
So I think this point, you just want to close public hearing.
Yeah, okay.
So if there's no other evidence, we're going to go ahead and close public hearing. Okay? Next item on the agenda is the proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. Will somebody be presenting or...?
Yeah, we've got Forrest, there's a name back there.
Forrest. For the record, if you just come up and tell everybody your name and your organization.
My name is Forrest Wyatt, I'm the executive director for Mon EMS. So EMS Week is a time where we celebrate all the activities that EMS does throughout the, throughout the year and the hard work our providers do on a day-to-day, or on every day, every night, every day basis. It's a week for us typically to celebrate publicly and do a lot of public events. However, this, there's a lot of things that are involved. Getting governmental bodies just to recognize the week, that type of thing, are, are important to us to help us to celebrate and to show our staff the support. We typically do a lot of public events, a lot of community events. However, this year, our team has decided that with the compassion fatigue and the hard work that our folks have done, we've really turned a lot of our events to our staff, showing their support and appreciation, and trying to give back to them the hard work they've done over the last, you know, 12 to 15 months, as we've all dealt with this very unique world we live in now. So with that, I didn't have any other formal thing other than to... Do I need to read this?
Yeah.
Oh, sweet. All right, the proclamation is, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important, out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the medical, excuse me, the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the Montague County Commission, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through 22nd, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the EMS Strong theme. This is EMS, caring for our communities. We encourage the community to observe this week the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities adopted this 12th day of May, 2021. Signed by all three commissioners.
Move for approval, second.
Okay, all those in... Any discussion?
No.
I do want to say thank you, Forrest. People forget that during this whole pandemic, you guys were still out there and still covering the county. And so I can imagine, you were talking about fatigue with your employees, and I certainly couldn't point to a group other than medical professionals who have had to, you know, haven't had the opportunity to work from afar, you know, that have had to go in every day through this pandemic, and we really appreciate all your support. Appreciate everything you're doing with, you know, our, it's been probably a year and a half, two years, since we've received any complaints about timing, you know, about response times from EMS, and, you know, it's just all good. When we hear something, it's good news. I really appreciate everything you're doing, and always, everything your employees are doing.
Good.
This is a well, well-needed and welcomed proclamation, so thank you.
Thank you so much for the kind words, I appreciate it. And part of our commitment to you is, we definitely will plan to come back and see you here in a couple of months, give you all an update. And in the meantime, is there ever anything you all need from us, please let us know. And once again, thank you all for the kind words, and thank you for the recognition.
We have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is calling grants. None, okay. Correspondence.
Received a letter from, unfortunately, we received a letter from Jim Manila. He is relocating to Florida and is going to resign his position on the Mountain Line Transit Authority Board. You may or may not be aware that the county has three appointees, and then we also have a joint appointee with the city of Morgantown, so...
Which capacity was Jim serving?
He was one of our appointees.
Just one of ours.
So he wasn't a choice, so you'll add that to the list, and we need to, all of our other positions with the Mountain Line or Field, the county...
Correct, I think the, the joint city-county position is typically recommended by WVU. They give us a recommendation, and we confer with the, the city and see if that's something that we're willing to agree on.
Okay.
I think that one may be, there may be an issue with that one.
Okay.
So we'll address that next week, but, yeah, so we'll have to advertise for this. We've already actually gotten one application for it, so word's already out, apparently.
Okay.
Move to accept the resignation, unfortunately, second.
Okay, all those in favor, unfortunately, say aye.
Aye.
And wish Jim and his wife well as they relocate to Florida, and will be losing two great citizens.
We did receive another piece of correspondence. We were actually just copied on this, but it's a letter that was written to the Mon River Trails Conservancy from a Timothy Gumney about some property that is, that he owns, it's along the railroad trail. I just wanted to make that part of the record, that there were some issues with some limbs and...
I read that, I thought he was writing it to the MRTC, telling them that they have issues on their property. But it's not even their property, it belongs to Alexa Enterprises. So I think that was the point, he was saying, hey, you've got these trees that are ready to fall, and you've got a hole in the ground that you need to take care of, but it's not the MRTC's property.
We discussed this at the board meeting last week, and they're aware of it, and they're taking appropriate action to address it, the board is...
Okay.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay. I had one, we had, I had two letters from the State Development Office approving the TIF applications. It came in last week, and of course, we'll be talking about those later in the agenda. Do you guys have any correspondence?
No.
Tom, you have your letter from the...
I didn't know, did you want to bring that up under the business?
No, under correspondence.
Okay, under correspondence. We did receive a letter, I need to go back and find it, requesting a letter of support, of the Hazels.
Oh, you want to address that now?
That's what I said, you want to do it under...
Just under correspondence.
Okay, put on, okay.
He received correspondence, let's address it as such.
Okay. Under what is now, Ramada Inn has now been called the Hazel's House of Hope. And what they requested was a letter being sent to Senator Manchin, because there are funds available, and all they're asking from us is support in trying to attain those funds.
Okay, and there's no, there's no financial consideration in the letter, and these are normal with grant applications, the, usually the, the entity asks for letters of support from local entities, and we do certainly have support what I consider the Ramada Project, I guess it has a new name. So I don't have a... Do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
So move that we support this letter.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. No unfinished business?
No.
Okay, new business. To consider for enactment on second reading following a public hearing of an ordinance authorizing and approving the current refunding of the Series 2014A bonds, authorizing the leasing by the county commission of the Montague County Justice Center from the Montague County Building Commission, approving the sale, issuance, and delivery by the Montague County Building Commission of its Series 2021 bonds, to one, finance the current refunding of the Series 2014A bonds, and two, pay certain costs of issuance of the Series 2021 bonds and related cost.
Move for approval, discussion.
Okay, Jason.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
Well, again, for the record, Jason Turner from Steptown Johnson. My firm is bond counsel for the county commission on a number of active matters right now, this being one of them. I explained the, the ordinance earlier during the public hearing portion, so at this point, it would be appropriate to do the second reading. I can handle that for, for the commission now. Ordinance authorizing and approving the current refunding of the Montague County Building Commission West Virginia Lease Revenue Bonds, Series 2014A, Montague County Justice Center, the Series 2014A bonds, leasing of the Montague County Justice Center by the Montague County Building Commission, the issuer, to the county commission of Montague County, the county commission pursuant to a lease agreement, the execution and delivery of the lease agreement, a bond purchase agreement, a continuing disclosure agreement by the appropriate officials of the county commission, approving a preliminary official statement and authorizing an official statement with respect to the issuer's lease revenue refunding bonds, Series 2021, Montague County Justice Center, the Series 2021 bonds, the execution and delivery of certain agreements, documents, and other matters regarding the issuance by the issuer of the Series 2014, sorry, Series 2021 bonds.
Move for...
We have a first, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Order is approved.
I'm going to stand up here, because unfortunately for you all, the next two items I am handling as well. Okay, at the end of these three, if it's okay, if I can approach, go ahead and have Commissioner Sikora sign each of these documents, and then I can kind of get that all out of the way at once, does that work?
Sure, that'd be fine. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to consider for adoption by the county commission an order which would approve amendment number two to project plan number one for the existing redevelopment district known as Montague County Redevelopment District Number Two, Morgantown Industrial Park, to extend the period during which said TIF district is in existence from 25 to 30 years. Amend the boundaries of said TIF district by removing certain parcels and providing for other items in connection thereof. Do I have a motion?
Move for adoption, second.
We have a second, okay, Jason.
So as the commission is, I'm sure, aware, you all have taken this matter up twice. At this point, you set a public hearing, you had a public hearing, you authorized the submission of the application to the development office, and the development office, as Commissioner Sikora mentioned earlier, responded last week with their letter of approval for this application. As the, the order that you have in front of you states, the primary purposes of this are to remove certain properties from the district, which will be going into the new district that we'll talk about here in a minute, extend the life of the district from 25 years, which is what it was originally approved at, to the full 30 years that is allowed by the TIF Act, and also increasing the bonding capacity for the district based on its revenues.
And I do want to point out that we submitted the application on the 21st, and we got approval from the state on the 5th, which...
Record time.
Unheard of.
Record time.
Unheard of.
So it's a, it's a...
Yes.
...apparent how important this project is to, to this area and the state, so...
Yes.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the order is approved. Next item on the agenda, to approve for adoption by the county commission an order which would approve and create the new tax increment financing district known as the County Commission of Montague County Development District Number Five, Harmony Grove. Approve project plan number one for said TIF district, establish the tax increment financing funds for said TIF district, and for providing for other items in connection thereof.
Move for adoption, second.
Okay, Jason.
As, again, the commission knows, you have heard about this a couple of times already. It's kind of moving at the same pace as the other application, they are related projects, since certain parcels from the Morgantown Industrial Park TIF district are being removed and added to this district to assist and facilitate the construction of the new interchange in the Harmony Grove area. And so this is a new district, sort of in that area, and also over to the west of I-79 as well, which will be a, you know, have the boundaries and the, have the, the parcels within it that are listed here in the, the order. And so, yeah, this is part and parcel of the same project, trying to facilitate the same projects. And again, you received, on the same day, you received correspondence from the, the development office approving this application.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motions is...
All right.
Do you want to come forward?
Yeah, you want to do that now, and then you can go.
Go ahead and get this done.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a pen?
Yes.
Hey, good choice. All right, we'll do this one first. There's two of them, so we'll be one, we can take one for ourselves.
Okay.
Renata, I'm going to stop down and carry on this after this and see if she can sign these. If not, we'll be in the further and children.
Forward a moment.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, finally, Justice Center ordinance. Thank you very much. All right, thank you, Jason. See you soon. Appreciate all your help. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Marine Forces Special Operations Command and the Montague County Commission and Montague County Sheriff's Office to conduct periodic training in Montague County for a term of five years. Motion to approve?
Still move, second.
Okay, I understand this is new, this hasn't been in place before.
That's correct.
Okay.
I did, I did talk to the sheriff about it, he reviewed it, didn't have any issues. But I did want to vet that with our insurance company, so I did send that on to them, I got approval back last week. So this has been vetted, ran through the insurance attorneys, and so everything should be good to go.
Yeah, and I looked through the agreement too, and when there's going to be any sort of operations, they will notify us, they will notify the sheriff. For the most part, there will never be any, they won't be using live ammunition or anything like that, they may have simulated things, but for the most part, it sounded fairly, fairly simple and straightforward, so... so, um, so we, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hoorah.
Gibbs would be proud.
Next item on the agenda is to approve, to consider for approval requisition number forty-six for the UTC Series 2017 Administrative Expense Fund.
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay, this is twenty-eight, two thousand eight oh five seventy-five, and is for two, two invoices from U N C A, correct?
Two thousand eight oh eight seventy-five.
Yeah, that's what I thought I said, but I may, may have said it wrong. Okay, we have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, consideration for requisition number fifty-three for the UTC Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Move for approval?
Second.
And this one is the normal, which I like to note, this is the highest amount I've ever seen, that's going into this, that account, that I've, or at least I've taken notice of, it's for eight hundred and fifty-four thousand six ninety-four twenty-five, and that's after the hundred thousand dollar statutory lien and tax administration fee, so, I think it's definitely a sign that the economy's picking up a little bit.
You have to remember, Menard's open during this period.
Yes, yes, well, that's, it's picking up because of that, uh, so, this is, this is a good sign, I, I generally take note of these when they come through, and, and again, even through COVID, I've been watching it closely, and, uh, it's a good sign that this number is going up, so.
Great.
We have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next item, to consider proposal provided by Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield for county employee health insurance programs.
Move for approval?
Second.
Second, okay, Renata, do you want to, uh?
Sure.
Generally, yeah.
General.
So, we received a proposal initially from, uh, through our broker, USI, from Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield for the employee medical plan, uh, which also includes dental and vision. They initially had quoted an upwards of eighteen percent increase, they had that brought down to ten, and then they worked harder with Highmark to get that down to three point nine percent, which is, that's very good. Um, and that's, that's only with one small, uh, well, actually, two small changes. Um, we've made a modification to deductibles, um, not deductibles, co-pays on emergency room visits, so those will be a hundred and fifty dollars for a co-pay, uh, if you go to the emergency room, and that's really to keep people from going to the emergency room, because that's the highest cost to our insurance. If you can put that off to go to an urgent care, or even better yet, to go to your regular doctor's office, that's, that saves a lot of money. So, to deter people from going to the emergency room unless there's a real emergency. The other small change was on specialty prescriptions, um, if you, if you get something off the specialty prescription list, you have to pay thirty percent or a max of fifty dollars, instead of your regular seven fifty or fifteen co-pay.
Yes.
So, the max you would pay is fifty dollars.
And, and we started, uh, looking at that, uh, thirty percent maximum, three hundred, and we kind of settled in on fifty, because we, we want to make these small changes to not really disrupt our employees, but also to, um, to change some habits as far as what, what we're utilizing, uh, but because we made that change, we had to increase our out-of-pocket.
Yes, that's right.
Because otherwise, a change wouldn't, we, we could have changed that, but if we didn't change our out-of-pocket, uh, the change would never, the, the, it would never kick in, so, there was a slight change of that. And I do want to point out before, uh, again, we try to make very, very small changes. Uh, in two thousand eighteen, we made some big changes when we had our high deductible health plan, uh, but we, at that time, we also, uh, lowered the rate, the premium rate of a lot of our employees, because there was a different, there were two different rates, if you were hired before two thousand and one, it was one rate, and if you're hired after, it was a higher rate. So, even then, what we decided was, rather than trying to raise everybody to that one rate, we took the hit and brought everybody down to the, to the one rate, and instituted a high deductible plan. The first year, we had like twenty-five people, now I think a majority of our people are on the high deductible plan, so, that, that effort is, uh.
We have about a hundred and sixty-eight people that are on the high deductible.
So, that effort, that effort is, uh, uh, saving the county money. So, that year, we, we took all the increase, and I don't have the individual years, I did check, that's before I came in, but it didn't update on here, uh, but that year, we saved us, our employees a certain amount of money, uh, and our costs were actually down a couple hundred thousand, but across the five years, the county has absorbed all the increases, uh, that have come through insurance, and it totals up to about, even with the one year with the two hundred thousand dollar decrease, it still totals about a one point two million dollars over five years that we've absorbed. So, we've kept our employees' premiums the same for those five years, so, I hope employees understand that, and also have some patience with us as we try to tweak these other areas to try to, we, we put the high deductible health plan in place to try to change employees, or change, uh, make the employees better consumers, because with that, you pay everything until you hit your deductible, um, which the county also provides the two thousand dollar, uh, health savings account, so, for most of our employees, we already cover their deductible, so, we put that in place, though, to make people more aware of better consumers of insurance, so, some of these other things, we're just trying to do to make our employees better consumers, and, uh, save the county money, and save, save them money in the all, in the, in the long run, so, again, with some of these little changes, they need to look at the whole picture, and how we have structured healthcare in the past five years that has really made some significant changes while still keeping the employees' premiums the same, so.
I think it is, we should also note that we did ask, uh, USI, our broker, to look at other, uh, entities that are similar to ours, as far as government, um, and what they offer, and our plan is so rich, we are in the top tier of what we offer employees versus what they have to pay out of pocket.
I think she said ninety-nine percent of.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did benchmarking for us, and, and again, we're off the charts as far as, and we're always having those discussions with our employers, and you gotta, you know, I mean, have those discussions with our, our agents for the help, you know, maybe you should consider making this a little, little less rich here, and a little less rich here, which again, our, our focus is not trying to keep things, keep change from affecting our employees, so, we do look at that every year, but if, if you do look at benchmarks, our, our, our health insurance is off the charts as far as, uh, what other entities similar to us offer, so.
I mean, the employees, across the board, I mean, pay an average of nine percent of the total premium, that's unheard of.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, the small changes that we've made help us a little bit, but still keeps the employees' premiums the same.
Yeah, and I can say, you know, having another employer, when, usually what happens is you fight to keep the premiums down, because any, anytime those premium increases come, they generally go straight to the employee, not the employer, and this is completely the opposite of that paradigm, so.
Yeah, and of course, the employee, if you're employee only, and you don't cover any other family members, you, your premiums are paid in full.
Right.
So, that takes in, takes, take that into account. We also, to note, we also did receive a, a reduction of premiums for our dental insurance, it went down slightly, um, based on, I guess there just wasn't as many people going to the dentist in the last, in the last plan year, because of COVID, so.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, you guys have anything that you want to add?
No.
Okay, first and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next item is consideration of a recommendation of a successful offer in response to RFP MCC twenty twenty-one zero zero one, that RFP being, uh, uh, to provide Montague County with a comprehensive strategic broadband plan. Since this project is under my supervision, I'm going to take the rare step of president to make the motion, and I'd make that motion that the Montague County Commission conclude this procurement opportunity with the award of a firm fixed price contract agreement to Ice Miller Whiteboard to provide a comprehensive strategic broadband plan for Montague County. The value of the resulting contract agreement is two hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and fifty-seven. First, we have a second.
I would like to second it with point of clarification.
Okay, so we have a second.
Yeah, if you could explain why you're permitted, and, just so the public understands, because we don't usually do this, but.
Well, no, I'll go through the, uh.
Okay.
Oh, why I'm permit.
Yeah, why you are allowed.
As a small board.
Yeah.
I, I, the president can, can make motions.
Correct.
We generally don't, uh, but I, I wanted to be clear as far as what the motion was, so I went ahead and made the motion. And I'd like to give a little bit of a summary of what we actually did here. I believe in, um, early, uh, February, February third, we issued a solicitation to, we put it out through all legal means, and we also put it out through a couple, um, planning organizations to get as much competition as, as possible, to obtain a consultant to provide a comprehensive strategic broadband plan for Montague County. We had a pre-bid conference, so anybody that had interest would contact our, uh, county secretary, Colleen Kuhn, and she would provide them with the RFP documents, and then from that point on, they were notified anytime there was any event or any change, so we had a pre-bid conference. We had approximately thirty people who had expressed, three different entities that had expressed interest, um, some of those were combined on the same team, but for the most part, um, uh, we had about thirty people. We had a, um, pre-bid conference, so we, we answered any questions, which was surprising, because even before we issued the solicitation on the third, we'd spent about three months writing this, writing this RFP, because we really wanted to make sure that we were getting a comprehensive plan, uh, that we weren't just going to get a cut and paste of somebody else's efforts, uh, that they had performed somewhere else, that we wanted something that was specific for Montague County, and we, we determined that we were putting a premium on, on the support, the technical value of this, so we actually, the RFP was, had a seventy-thirty split, where technical, uh, performance was worth seventy percent of the overall evaluation, and cost was only thirty. So, we, we put it out, we had no amendments, um, we had a process for answering questions, which was totally transparent, anybody had a question, we answered it within three days, and we put it out on a Dropbox location, so that everybody would see those, those, uh, those answers. By the due date, which was, um, I believe March seventeenth, uh, we had ten responses that had, uh, got to us by the due date and time. We then sent those of, uh, responses, we separated the cost and technical, we didn't open the cost proposals, we opened up the technical, and we developed a technical evaluation committee. That committee was a wide, wide swap across talent and skill mix across the county. We had Bill Austin, our MMPO director, uh, his expertise was planning and economic development, we had Eric Carlson from Russ's Morgantown Area Partnership, uh, he's a Morgantown Area Partnership Vice President, his expertise is, uh, is very IT oriented, plus he's also economic development, Andrew Gasbrey, our county planner, um, whose expertise is in planning and economic development, Michael Fortney, who's a communications expert, he's with our MECA nine one one, Ron Lidle is with the County Board of Education, is also has construction expertise, uh, myself as the, uh, commission rep, and also, uh, the, basically the lead on the procurement, Jeff Wells, our county IT supervisor, and we even had a, um, I, I call him the citizen representative, but it was, uh, we had a representative, David Shrewsbury, who I had been corresponding with prior to the decision to go out with an RFP and trying to help him with his situation where he lives in Cheet Lake, and he's told by everybody that he's covered, and he's not. But he's an IT professional, he's a software developer that actually, um, was very, very, very instrumental in this whole process, so, that was our technical evaluation committee. Uh, we, we made the, um, proposals available to them, everybody had to sign an NDA OCI to make sure that there was, uh, there'd be no conflicts, and the information be kept confidential, uh, through the whole process. We did a couple looks at, um, the scores as they came in, and when we did the first look, um, there was a requirement in the solicitation to achieve a minimal, a minimal acceptable score of technical rating, and that's a state, that's a state statute that says if you're rating somebody and they come in, and you have a score that's defined for technical, uh, they have to achieve at least a seventy percent to, uh, be considered responsive and move forward, so, having the technical worth seventy percent, that meant that anybody that came in in our evaluation had to meet a score of forty-nine, uh, to continue on. So, the first cut, we only had three vendors that met that level, we took another look to try to level the, uh, competition, and we removed the first and the last, the, the, the worst and best, uh, uh, scoring for each vendor, and that kind of widened the field to five, um, because we wanted to have as much of, uh, we, we wanted to try to have as much of a technical perspective as possible, so, we widened it to five, and then we decided that we were going to have, um, oh, and by the way, each evaluator, they rated the ten proposals from one to ten, and if you, I went through and also did another look at it to make sure that what we were doing was, made sense, and if you took first place got one, second place got two, and you did that all the way through ten, the, the top five lined up just the same way the scores did, so it really kind of reiterated that was the right path forward. So, at that point, we had five, uh, vendors that were considered responsive and moved on to further consideration, and we had five vendors that were considered non-responsive and, and, uh, removed from, removed from further consideration. At that point, the Commission, uh, we opened up in a work session, we opened up the cost proposals to see what those were, and we only opened up the cost proposals for the only, the five that were considered responsive, and what we found was that the, the responses were very varied, uh, we had, the highest proposal was two fifty, six fifty-seven, and the lowest was forty-six thousand seven twenty-five, so when you see something like that from a, from a procurement's perspective, that probably tells you that there may not have been full understanding of the requirements or what they were providing, so, at that point, we decided to have, um, oral presentations and further discussions with each of these vendors, we set up a schedule on April twenty-second, where each vendor, we had five slots, and they signed up for their slots on a first come, first served basis, so, we had them here in the Commission chambers, and we actually spent all day, an hour, each had an hour to go through and basically iterate their, their strengths, explain their proposal, answer any questions, and, uh, then any follow-on questions, and we kept strictly to an hour, and thanks to Eric's help for organizing all this. Again, I wouldn't, we wouldn't have been able to do this without the help of the partnership, uh, providing Eric to basically, uh, bird dog everything and keep everything moving. So, as we went through that, uh, it became apparent that we really, we, the, the team kind of really gravitated to, towards two, two vendors that we wanted to consider further conversations with. Some were, a, as you can imagine, with all the, with all the dollars floating around for, for broadband, uh, there were ones that, you know, their proposals were cut and paste, throw over the fence and see what could happen, and, that really, you know, could, you could tell, you know, in the conversations that, you know, they, they, that, uh, they really weren't, uh, looking at Mont County and looking at really trying to, uh, provide what we were asking for, so, at that point, and we actually did a scoring from the, from the orals, and it, it also kind of led to the top two vendors that we had, uh, been left with. One was, um, Ice Miller, who we've, uh, who we recommended for the award, and the other one was Entry Point. We then, because the two, the two proposal, the cost proposal parts of those were still very varied, we, we kind of zeroed in a couple parts that were, we thought was going to make up the difference in those cost proposals, because we had one that was two hundred and fifty thousand, and one that was fifty thousand, uh, but as we zeroed in, we really found out that, uh, it became a clear, apparent that Ice Miller had really proposed what we wanted, and the costs were really, the costs really related to what we wanted, and that Entry Point fell short to, to, uh, short of that, uh, but we did put out a formal best and final offer to clarify those, uh, differences, the differences were clarified and, and evident, and we moved forward with the recommendation to, uh, award a contract to Ice Miller Whiteboard. We did our due diligence and verified, uh, their financial status, I did a check on Sam to make sure that they didn't have any exclusions from performing work, uh, and, uh, again, the Commission will see when we sit down with them, it's a conglomeration, Ice Miller is a law firm, but their whole package is called Ice Miller Whiteboard, and they bring other entities, uh, lit communities, TLZ, uh, it's really a comprehensive, you know, put all, put a lot of resources into this to, to, to give us what we really want, and one of the other things, there was, they were, they had a lot more engineering built into their, into their proposal, which is what we wanted, we want actual plans. We want actual plans. We want, once we decide what we're going to do, we want to know, we want the plans to already be ready to do that and to not have a one-size-all-fit solution. Entry Point, they kind of was, they said they'll do whatever we ask, but they really kept coming back to, you know, the first solution is fiber and that was the only solution. We're looking for temporary solutions. We're looking for any, you know, all the above to get our, get our citizens the broadband access as quick, quick as possible. So, that's why it became evident that Ice Miller should be suggested as the, as the parent offer and once we take our vote, they will be. So, did you guys have anything to?
I just want to congratulate you and your committee. I think it's very clear that this was not a, okay, let's make a quick decision. It's a multi-month decision and then you went through the process. And also, it is very rare being on, on a governmental body that with such a discrepancy, we actually went with the higher price, but I think we, I don't look at it that way. We looked at the program that was best for Mon County and what was best for all of us in a comprehensive plan. And that's what was the difference I saw between the two.
And you really could be pound, or penny wise and pound foolish and do, do things. And that's.
I've learned through the school system, that is not the best way.
A lot of times, yeah, government does seal bid, which the bid is what it is.
Yes.
And that isn't always, you know, I, in what I do, I do more best value. So, we're bringing the overall best value and in the end, we may have been saving ourselves money because of all the pre-panning that's done ahead of time, so.
Well, the pandemic has certainly shown us how necessary and needed broadband is in the county, especially in the outer rims and more mountainous regions, and it's essential all across the country, but especially here. So, thank you for all the hard work and we look forward to seeing the plan implemented.
So, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. We'll move forward, we'll notify the vendors and we'll look forward to getting them in here for a work session to tell us about their plans and, you know, hold them accountable for moving forward with our, for our overall plan. I do want to have one other small motion, it's kind of related, but the solicitation was for someone to provide a comprehensive plan and then it gave them exclusive status for follow-on work and executing that plan. This is actually nothing binding, I just wanted to be on the record that as a result, this procurement is recommended that as the sole discretion, future discretion of the commission and Ice Miller Whiteboard begin exclusive consideration towards negotiation of a follow-on contract to assist the commission in implementing the final approved comprehensive strategic broadband plan once approved by the Montague County Commission, so.
Are you moving that?
Yes, I moved it.
Okay, second.
Okay, and again, there is no, there's nothing binding here. The cards are all on our, we, we hold the cards. If we, as we're putting the strategic plan in place, if we want to move another direction as far as implementing, we have that flexibility. I'm just stating that at that point, if we decide to continue to use Ice Miller Whiteboard, which is what we put into the solicitation, that whoever we select for the comprehensive plan would have exclusive capability to, to manage the follow-on work. I just wanted to make that point, that that is, it's, it's there. And again, that's for a future decision, but I didn't want that to be on the record. So, to the first and the second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Consideration to approve a letter of support from the historic Morgantown Post Office Building renovations and expansions of programs.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussions?
I've received a letter and asked for the county commissioners to support, and this is for the historic Morgantown Post Office Building renovation.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. That's any more new business? Okay, I don't think we had enough. Reports from elected officials or department supervisors? Okay. Reports from county commissioners. Jeff?
Just that there are several job openings at Camp Muffley for seasonal work, kitchen work and maintenance work, and they're having trouble finding folks to fill these positions. So, if you know anyone that's looking for summer job, contact Misty out at Camp Muffley. Also, on a personal note, regret to inform the passing of my great uncle Santino Thomas Serpinto, and he was 97, and I mention him because he was a World War II veteran. He stormed the beach at Anzio on the Italian Front. One of my personal heroes, he was a brilliant man and we're, pretty much lost that generation. There aren't too many of them left and we, they truly were the greatest generation and we owe him everything, so.
That's sincere sympathy to your family.
Thank you.
Yeah, this has been a sad week also. My father-in-law, Wendy's father, passed away and when we posted it, we wanted the public to be aware of what dementia is in all-timers. And I, and I can say that we have five families reach out to us who then we refer to the All-Timers Association. So, what I would just like to say is, you know, he will be missed and for those families who go through this, please reach out because there is help for those individuals. And unfortunately, it seems to be a lot more of dementia in all-timers at this time. The second thing is, I was proud to represent Mon County and also the Weiss Bloom family. My son and I were invited to the Mon Health Medical Center on Friday at 10 o'clock for what is called a nurse oasis ribbon cutting. My cousin Kenny Weiss, we call him Kenny, when he was in the hospital, realized how much stress was put on the nurses. Of all the things with the COVID, they're probably the one group that has so much stress that during this time. And he suggested and funded a, what's called an oasis room, which is basically a room for nurses to go to relax, to rejuvenate, whether before work, after work, or during where they have a period of time. And we were very fortunate, Dave Goldberg took the idea, ran with it, and we were able to start this room. And the funny thing was they were lined up as we left to already start using the room, which was really, really nice. And as a Cheat Lake Rotary member, there's a four-way test and this is just amazing that he's willing to still give back to the community even when he's not here. So, I, I want to say thank you and very pleased with, hopefully we can put those in other hospitals in the community. Ooh, that's interesting. Oh, wait, is it? Okay, thank you. The other just thing I want to bring up is, I attended the Treasury's ARPA Funding Guidance webinar, which I handed out to you all, and it's a three-page information. They're still trying to get all the information out, but what it is, is we're starting to see that it is more with our new funds that we're going to be using besides just, besides just water, sewer, broadband and COVID, there's much more. If I just want to stress on page two, impacted industries, tourism, travel and hospitality, and that will, we'll be discussing at the work session. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. And I, Ken was on the Health Department Board and so I got to know him through his support to the Health Department and probably one of the most pleasant people in the room that he was always so smiling on his face, always looked like he just wondered what he was up to because he was just a smiling, happy individual. So, I.
Thank you.
It's nice that David did that for him.
Yes.
Since last meeting, last Thursday, you're all aware, Tom and I made a trip to Charleston to meet with the Department of Transportation, Department of Highways. During the trip down, I still participated in a number of phone calls, a MAP Executive Committee meeting and a number of other meetings. Friday, I had a conference call with Health Mark Blue Cross Blue Shields to finalize our healthcare premiums. And then we had a broadband initiative best and final offer discussion. And then I had a meeting with W Hospitals and the Health Department, looking at a couple built properties. Sunday, of course, was Mother's Day. I hope everybody had a happy Mother's Day. Monday, I had the Airport Commerce Park Finance Discussion, Juma Meeting yesterday, and things are really starting to pick up at the Aquatic and Track Center, which is, which is a good deal. And today's a regular meeting. Tomorrow, I have Red Team and Development Authority. Friday, we have staff reports and then at noon, I have the Infrastructure Week where I'm moderating a panel put on by the partnership. In general, I really want to thank the Broadband Initiative members for all their support and their availability to work through a lot of, there's a lot of quick meetings and a lot of, a lot of input, a lot of asks to try to get to the point where we were able to suggest a vendor. The Juma, I want to point out that today will be the first middle school track meet at the track. Today at 4:45, so you may want to, you may want to stop by and just see. Finally, we've been trying to get the middle school to be able to utilize the track and I know between the university and the high schools, it wasn't really considered when the event was open, that the middle school be utilizing the track. But we've been pushing that for a long time and it's good that, when I heard that they were actually having their first track meet there today, really happy to hear that. Today, or this week is National Police Week. Thanks to all of our representatives from the Sheriff's Department. Didn't want this week to go by without you guys being recognized. Each year in our nation, we lose about 140 to 160 law enforcement officers in the line of duty, and I think it's important that we take time to recognize you. I know the courthouse is blue at night, I believe, so thanks, thanks for all that. In regards to our meeting in Charleston, it was a good meeting. It was, it was a frank discussion and it was positive. And again, we aired, they aired, we aired grievances. And one of the points that they, that I left the meeting with is, we got to do a better job of communication. We got to do a better job of, one, talking as one from the county, and two, having those conversations directly with DOH rather than in social media and in the papers because that was the first thing that, you know, Commissioner or Secretary White said, opened up the meeting, he goes, "How are we supposed to help you guys?" And every time you turn around, you're smacking us upside the head, you know? So, in it, he's, he's, it's, it's true. You know, it's true. We, we need to communicate. We had issues with the project at 155 and it was slipping.
Right.
There were, there were deadlines that were missed and a lot of those were on us because we weren't aware of them, we couldn't do anything about it. But, you know, there's, there's certainly, there's a lot of work to go around. So, if we stop worrying about the blame to go around and just worry about the work to go around, I think that we can get a lot more done. And we left there with a positive feeling that we were, we were going to communicate better and we're going to work together better. And I, I do, I do see, I, we've already seen some improvements this, this week as far as things getting approved and our projects moving. So, really appreciate Tom for making the trip. I know, Jeff, you weren't able to, but it was important that we go down there, even though the meeting was only, it was supposed to be 45 minutes and it actually ended up being like an hour and a half. So, I, everybody that participated, it was from Secretary White to Commissioner Reston to Jason, Jason, I can't remember Jason's last name.
Abrams or Turner or?
No.
Foster.
Yes, Jason Foster.
Yes.
Dave Kramer from DOH.
It was a who's who, yeah.
We had our, our developer there, Ryan Lynch, his, his consultant, Amy Stodd from HDR, which HDR is very well-respected within DOH and, and they, they do a lot of good work for the county on our projects in Charleston. And we had Brian Abraham from the Governor's Office who participated. So, really thanks to everybody and it was, it was, it was a good meeting.
If I could bring two other things along that meeting, which was good. The one thing that came out, and this is what I said on the radio today, was our number one priority was that the state was officially committed to Exit 155 and that was very clear and we were moving forward on that. The other was that they are now going to consider Exit 155 under what's called special projects where the, where as Sean said, there'll be one point of contact throughout that development and that has just been something we've needed. And, and I agree with Sean, and I said it, I believe the three county commissioners have made it clear to them that we are adamant to speak as one voice with MMPO and we will be the leaders to make sure that happens because we've allowed that to fest and we've had five projects and I want it real clear. West Run, Orchard Bypass, Mile Ground, Green Bag Road and Exit 155 where we have one idea and then others came in and we need to speak as one voice. And I think we cleared that up and I would agree, Sean. I think that was what came out of it and very positive meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.